Okay, here we go. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order tonight, Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. We will move right into item number one, which is the consent agenda. And the first item is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, Tuesday, November 25th. We have one CUP to consider, no old business and no staff announcements. Does anybody have any questions regarding today's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for November 25th, 2025, as printed.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move right into item number two on the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes from last meeting on September 23rd, 2025. Does anybody have any issues or corrections from the minutes of the last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as printed.
I'll second it. Okay, it's been properly moved and second that we approve the minutes from September 23rd, 2025, as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move into new business. And the first item on the agenda is CUP 25-09, consideration of a conditional use permit to allow construction of a battery energy storage system at the request of Mountain Peak Energy Storage. Staff?
All right, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a request by Mountain Peak Energy Storage, and they're requesting a establishment of a battery energy storage system facility at a parcel, 40-acre parcel located on the southwest corner of McReynolds Road and Simpson Road, Section 28, Township 15, Range 2. This parcel is zoned agricultural and within the rural development area of the comprehensive plan. This parcel is surrounded on all four sides by ag and cropland with some residential as well. The applicant is, as I said, proposing that battery-based electrical storage facility. Applicant has submitted items as required for application submittal under the requirements of the zoning regulations. The facility will be located in proximity to and work in conjunction with the Evergy substation and utilize less than 10 of the 40 acres of the subject parcel. The facility will function as supplemental power for the grid during peak hours of power usage to reduce the possibility of blackouts during these periods. The facility may also provide power during low-output phases of alternative energy sources. The county has been coordinating with the applicant as well as fire districts, road and bridge department, and emergency management over the past 12 months or more. The applicant is requesting a modification of the county's six months post-CUP approval for construction to be extended to 2029 timeframe to allow for acquisition of agreements with service providers for the facility. The applicant has agreed to enter into a road maintenance agreement with performance bond of an amount to be approved by the county engineer. An emergency response plan has been drafted with the assistance of emergency management and the fire districts. A decommissioning plan for this site is also proposed. Life expectancy for the batteries housed within the structure is approximately 30 years with routine maintenance and replacement when needed. Staff has received concerns from the public over the proposed use, primarily safety and how the use will impact character of the area. The comments from other departments and agencies are from the road and bridge department. They have been in coordination with the applicant on the road maintenance agreement to be in effect during construction phase. Emergency management and the fire districts have met with the applicant to compose an emergency response plan. It should be noted that due to the extended start date for construction, any documentation included as part of the application today will need to be updated on an annual basis until a permit is issued. The CUP review criteria to consider, there's a couple of these I want you to, I'm going to go over the standard review criteria that we have, and I've also included for you kind of a supplement to this as well. As I said, this use will be a low-impact, low-noise, low-profile facility that will occupy a leased area of 15 acres with the best facility itself occupying less than 10 acres of the 40 acres of the subject parcel. Use will be consistent with the existing electrical substation within the vicinity. Generation of traffic during construction phase only may not adversely impact existing traffic patterns. Very few residential uses are found within this area and is primarily cropland in the event of approval, however, because of the construction timeline is not anticipated until at least 2029. The applicant will need to advise staff on the status of the submitted plan every year until construction. Due to the predominantly rural location surrounding the parcel, the lower profile of the structure containing the batteries and design of the site planning is consistent with the surrounding area. There is currently nothing in Saline County that would be comparable to this proposal, though it functions similar to a substation accessory use. This use would provide infrastructure supplementing the existing power grid for the region, which will reduce the possibility of random blackouts that have a negative impact on residential uses or commercial businesses. Because, and under staff recommendations, because the battery energy storage is a new use in unincorporated Saline County and the technology is still in its infancy, there is nothing to compare it to in the county that would lend staff to make a recommendation at this time. The building permit, should you approve this, then these are the items that staff is strongly recommending that you consider as conditions. The building permit will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed. Facility must abide by all federal and state environmental laws and requirements for disposal of batteries and fire safety. A performance bond in an amount satisfactory to the county engineer with value adjusted for 2029 construction date with Saline County as beneficiary. Final decommissioning plan and signed road maintenance agreement with performance bond must also be submitted prior to building permit being issued. Because of the extended timeline again for the construction start date, applicant must advise the county on the status of the submitted plan on an annual basis until construction starts. In the event any changes of the submitted plan exceed 10%, that would be an increase in area, i.e., occupied area of the facility, or increase in height, increase in storage capacity, or any change in use of that surrounding area, i.e., new residential development requiring a plat applicant may need to reapply for the conditional use permit. There's a caveat to that last part about the residential. I'm not, this is just more or less to, you know, make you aware, make the applicant aware that, you know, there aren't any changes anticipated, but this is one of those things that they have to be aware of. It's more common in cities to have changes in existing areas that are being proposed for a conditional use, and so it's better to have that narrowed one-year or six-month timeframe to start construction to avoid any kind of use going in the vicinity that may impact the one that was just approved. So this is just basically, I am not anticipating any kind of residential, obviously residential development going in there, you know, until construction starts. It's just something that I have to say. However, the applicant will have to go through the planning commission again if there is a significant enough change beyond 10% of what is being proposed. So again, construction is not going to start until '29, right around '29, '28, '29. The response plan to ensure and maintain current accurate status until construction starts, so that would be, they would just have to consult with us every year on that. The alternatives would be to approve the request with the conditions listed above, conditionally approve the request with other conditions as commission may deem necessary or deny the request. Now, if you deny the request, the commission must provide a reason for the denial that I can take to the county commission if it's appealed. So with that, I've got some supplemental conditions required for approval to look at that I submitted to you. This is something that would, that staff has looked at, but also I feel you all should look at as well, and that would be under 121704. Basically, operators shall demonstrate their ability to strictly conform to and monitor all applicable performance standards detailed in these regulations, as well as applicable local, state, and federal laws and regulations. The key issues when you review this conditional use, in addition to what I've already stated, is you look at the visual impact as provided for in the comprehensive plan, any noise requirements that are provided, impact on wildlife or habitat, native flora or fauna, impact on cultural, historical, or archaeological features, impact on critical wildlife habitats, current state-listed threatened or endangered species and species in need of conservation as defined by Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks, impact on environmentally sensitive lands, impact on water quality and soil erosion, impact on infrastructure including roads and bridges for construction access, conformance with federal guidelines, cumulative impacts, company experience, reputation, financial ability must be held for the single entity applying for the permit, decommissioning, removal, reclamation, and disposal, bond agreement, or other means of ensuring reclamation, disposal, and decommissioning performance, specific requirements for building and construction, energy services and training requirements, and degree to which the agricultural uses and wildlife habitat are accommodated to the facility layout and design. With that, I'm, that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any quick questions? Okay, if not, what we will do is, the applicant is here, we will ask the applicant to come forward to state their case, if somebody would please. State your name, also address.
Joshua Swati here on behalf of Plus Power. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a few comments before we get started. First of all, I want to thank everybody in the room, including everybody behind us, for participating in this process. I also want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for the almost two years that you spent working on the regulations that would bring us to this point. That is not easy. It's not easy for any issue, but you did a tremendous job and took a lot of input from a lot of interested parties and came up with the regulations that have brought us to the point this evening. The only other thing I would like to say is that, as you know, your job, of course, is to determine that the regulator, that the application that Plus Power has put forward meets the regulations that you have set as the county. But it's also important to remember why we're here in the first place. Every time you pay your electric bill, you are paying for the electrons that you've used in your house or your place of business, but if you look at that bill, you're also paying for a portion of the transmission grid that we all use. And that transmission grid is very expensive, and you've probably grumbled about the portion that you pay for the transmission grid on your monthly electric bills. For the last 100 years plus, we have never been able to save the excess electrons that are wasted on that grid as it moves between daytime and nighttime hours. Now with battery storage, we are able to not only save those, but deploy those electrons at opportune times during the day. And if you do that at critical substations on the grid, it's beneficial to everybody. First of all, it's beneficial because it flattens out the power, the price curve, but second, it's beneficial because the better it manages the grid, the fewer transmission lines that are needed to be billed and that have to be paid for by all of us on our electric bills. And so that's what brings us here this evening, and one of the most complicated, largest substations in Kansas and in the Southwest Power Pool happens to be in south-central Saline County, and it's called Summit. And so that's why Plus Power came forward with this application. Christina Hoffman's going to walk you through it briefly. We have a team of people here to answer any questions as you have them, and we look forward to all of those. Thank you. Oh, and actually also, Tim, we have a few what we would consider minor considerations and conditions for the application as well. I'll give those to you. You can hand those out to the members. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Christina Hoffman from Plus Power. Our address is 1780 Hughes Landing Boulevard, Suite 675 in the Woodlands, Texas, 77380. Many people likely recall that we've been here before, requesting a CUP back in 2023. We acknowledged that at the time, the county had not contemplated or addressed battery energy storage use as a use in the county. And following withdrawal of that previous application for this same project, the county, as Josh mentioned, embarked on the process to draft regulations to regulate and permit battery energy storage projects developed in the county. The commission independently and thoroughly gathered input from the public during that process, from the commission members, from subject matter experts across many fields, and the end result is a set of robust regulations that specifically identify the land use, environmental, and safety standards and requirements that must be met for a battery energy storage project in the county. The standards address siting and design specifications, specific fire and electric code compliance, fencing, screening, noise, ongoing data collection, all to ensure that the facility meets the county goals and objectives and keeps the community safe while providing critical energy storage to meet existing and growing electrical needs. This application package was put together, it's one of the biggest ones we've put together in a while, and it meets those requirements that were listed in your regulations. We hope that this makes tonight's hearing a little easier than in 2023, when you were trying to contemplate a project that didn't have standards for a use in the county. That's our hope, and we understand that battery energy storage is new to Saline County, but this is not a new technology and it's not a new industry. There are hundreds of these types of facilities deployed across the US, keeping the grid reliable, secure, operating safely. Folks probably know that the DSO Electric Cooperative undertook a pilot using battery energy storage just this past summer at their substations. They really liked it. They're buying them. There's also the Solomon Energy Storage Project right in downtown, heavily developed Minneapolis, Kansas as well. So with that, looks like I have control of the clicker here, so I will move on to the next slide unless there's a...
You might have to put it in my way.
Your way. Hi Hannah. Is there a secret power button?
Do the technical difficulties beyond our control.
All right, very good, thank you. Hopefully that was me that did that, but we'll go, we'll work together. How about that? All right, so I'm going to briefly review a few points about our company, the batteries, the actual project, Mountain Peak Energy Storage, and how it meets the requirements in the regulations. And we have a few additional folks here from our team to answer some questions. We also have a couple of folks online as well. Their photos aren't listed on this slide here, but I will likely lean on others depending on the type of question that we get tonight. So just a little background about Plus Power. We are an American-owned, American-operated company. We were started in 2018 by energy industry experts. This is all we do, is standalone battery energy storage. We don't do anything other than this. We don't do, we're not creating generation of electricity. We don't do solar or wind or gas. We just do storage. That's our, that's our mission. And we have eight operating projects across the country, spanning from Hawaii over to Massachusetts, and we have a ninth project that's going to be coming online here very soon. It's up in the state of Maine, and it's in the final commissioning and testing phases as we speak. All right, we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. A little bit about batteries. I think that everybody is super familiar with batteries. They basically are powering our modern lives, and lithium-ion batteries in particular have been around for decades. This is an image of one of our projects, so you can see what a project looks like on the ground. This is our energy storage facility, one of them that we have down in Texas, in southern Texas. Regardless of where or how the electricity on the grid is generated, it's flowing through the overhead transmission lines, and these types of energy storage systems connect into a substation or a transmission line, and they absorb the excess energy when it's available. Josh touched on this a little bit earlier, and the energy is stored in the batteries, and then those batteries are, you know, you can see what it looks like. They're lined up in orderly rows on a very flat surface, and then when the utility needs power, they request that these batteries discharge their energy back up onto the grid during peak times of energy usage, or when there's a generation asset, some other asset is not producing the amount of generation that is anticipated at that very moment. The, the electric grid in Kansas, the operator, Southwest Power Pool, is anticipating that the demand for electricity in the next 10 years is anticipated to go up by 75%. Evergy, in their service area, they're anticipating that the peak, so the energy use kind of goes up and down during the day, and the peak is a really important one, and they anticipate the peak to double in their territory in the next 10 years as well. So there is substantial electricity demand increase happening right now in Kansas due to the strong economic development over many years and coming years. This technology's been evolving for decades, and the current units available for purchase can be installed just about anywhere. They have such stringent safety standards and testing before they go to market, they can be installed, you know, in between neighborhoods, adjacent to commercial businesses, they can be installed anywhere because they're so heavily tested by nationally-recognized organizations. The new zoning regulations that have been implemented here, they, they call out those safety recommendations, and they are required to be met in order for something to be built here. So let's take a look at the project in a little bit more detail on the next slide. All right, great, thanks. So the road that is sort of at the bottom of this photo here is Simpson, the southern half, South Simpson there, next to the Evergy substation. Our siting process is very focused on where the electric grid has a specific need, and this substation, called the Summit Substation, in the foreground on the right-hand side of the photo is existing. And that substation is a critical one on the grid that is dealing with a lot of congestion. You can see the transmission lines that are... You can see the transmission lines that are outlined in gray there, coming in, going out, in lots of different directions all around the existing Evergy Substation. And we basically are proposing to nestle our project all around that existing electrical infrastructure. It's not by accident. That's because, A, where the need is, B, it requires the shortest transmission line between our proposed facility and the electric substation, which avoids a long transmission line, and C, this electric infrastructure is already out there. So it really doesn't change the character of the area at all, and it has a very low profile, is very hard to see. You'll see on the future slide of what this looks like. It's got a low profile setback very far from the road. When you're going along that road, the Evergy Substation is very visible. Our facility would be kind of off in the distance. The parcel to be purchased is just under 40 acres. The best site area where the site enclosures are is less than 10 acres. The additional features of the build-out, including the fencing, the roadways, the stormwater, tallies up to about 15 acres. So about 15 acres of the site of the 40 would be used for the facility itself. This facility, we've conducted all of the studies and reports that are included in the regulations for our particular site. So there are site-specific reports. They're all in here, conditions A through X, I think it is, and they're all captured in here. We'll go to the next slide. Some of the conditions that we've got in here, we are, this is where you can see the low profile, actually. So this is a visual rendering from Simpson Road looking back west. So you can see where the facility sort of blends in. It's pretty low, and it is dominated really the scene by the existing transmission poles that are carrying the wires into and out of the Evergy Substation. The regulations also require that the most recent national fire and electrical safety standards must need to be met. The standards that are referenced in your regulations, I would say that they meet or exceed most of the other regulations that are noted in the surrounding counties, as well as the state of Kansas, and our project meets them, we're pleased to report, or even exceeds them. Some of the safety standards that are listed in your regulations include NFPA 68, 69, 70, which is also known as the National Electric Code, and NFPA 72. In addition to those codes, we listed just some of the standards and codes that on top of what's listed in the regulations will also be followed as part of our design and construction of a battery energy storage system. This also, on the image on the right, it gives a little sense as to how safe these facilities are. It compares best to some of the other common industries that are in the area, agricultural accidents, vehicle accidents, e-scooter injuries. So it really covers a lot. And in case it's not obvious, the battery energy storage system is the second in from the left. So it's one of the safest industries out there. In addition, the emergency response plan was prepared, and it would be updated annually in coordination with the emergency responders here in the county. We also provide initial and ongoing training to the emergency responders. We conduct training at different points of the project lifecycle. Typically, we do it in advance of construction, so folks have a sense as to what's coming. And then we continue retraining on a regular basis at all of our sites. Some of the benefits of one of these projects, Josh mentioned it, that peak shaving, where you have more assets available at the peak energy demand, that brings down the cost of electricity. The recent report for SPP, who operates the grid here, estimated that with even just a moderate amount of energy storage added to the grid in the SPP region would save ratepayers $7 billion over a 10-year period in total costs. And this is largely because these batteries, they charge when electricity prices are low, and they discharge during those peak demand hours. That basically helps lower the daily peak electricity prices when they tend to be the The project is estimated to bring in, it's, basically it costs a lot of money to purchase this equipment and bring it in here to the county, and it's a huge investment. It's hundreds of millions of dollars that it costs to build and operate these facilities. In essence, it's, doesn't also, sorry, I just got tied up on that one. It doesn't have any impact on county resources. So we don't need water for this facility, not needed for operations. There's no air emissions, there's no industrial wastewater effluent, and there's minimal traffic. Will create jobs during the construction phase, which is anticipated to last 12 to 18 months. We anticipate three to five full-time jobs on a long-term basis, folks that are going to be there operating and maintaining the facility over the long haul. Our schedule is fairly protracted. As Tim mentioned, these projects take a really long time to develop, and then they take a really long time, once you have found an optimal site and you've come up with preliminary designs. We work through these, this permitting process. We work through an interconnection process to connect the project into the grid, the Southwest Power Pool grid. Then we work with the utilities to sign contracts. There are really long lead pieces of equipment that take a long time to procure, and you have to put deposits down on them in advance, years in advance, from when you actually need them. So that's one of the reasons why we anticipate that, should this project be approved, that we would start construction in 2029, and it would start operating in 2030. This is a list, I won't go through them all, but it's a list of the standards that are in your regulations. We diligently went through and provided all the pieces of information that were requested and needed. All the way down, a little conversation coming about the farmland topic there as well. The general use permit criteria, I won't go too into detail because I feel like the staff report really covered that well already, but happy to answer questions. We feel that, as you can see, having it nestled in around the existing electrical infrastructure really makes it compatible with the surroundings and doesn't change the character of the area. And these are the additional conditions that we are requesting. I think that, Tim, we handed you a copy of these five requests that we had included in our application that we feel are very reasonable, given the nature of this type of facility. We know it's kind of an unusual facility in this area, and we request these to be included as conditions that would be placed on the project if it is approved. The first is regarding the schedule. That contracting process and all of the things that were listed on the previous slide there pushes us to request that the CUP allow a five-year period before we have to start The second one, the regulations currently state in that Section 121705U that the 25 years of CUP validity starts at the date of planning commission approval. As, as mentioned, we're not even going to start operations for five years, so we would like for the CUP term of 25 years to start at the time of commercial operations. Another option is to, for that item, is to add a five-year extension to the 25-year validity period. So that captures that other five years by making it a 30-year validity period. The grading requirement in Section 121705A2 states that grading should not exceed 5% of the site area unless a modification is granted by the planning commission, and the commission can grant such a modification. And as you saw on the photo of one of our other sites, best sites are big pieces of equipment that need to be on very flat, stable surfaces. They need a safe engineering design, a safe structural area. And so that, in addition for placing the equipment, it's also required to be flat and safe for access for people to be walking around to place the materials that are brought onto the site. So we are requesting that the site area be able to be graded as needed to follow the, really the building codes and fire codes that really require, that are required to install this best facility inside of the site area. The fourth one is minor modifications, and we'd like to clarify that any changes to the site plan that are less than that 10% threshold that Tim mentioned can be reviewed administratively and approved by the staff. And then the design reviews, Section 121705X indicates that compliance reviews would be conducted by a third-party firm and financed by the operator, and it would happen every, it would happen one year following project approval and every five years thereafter. And we just request that the cost of those compliance reviews be capped at a maximum of $10,000 per review. Leaving that open-ended tends to make our lenders a little nervous as to what it would end up being. So these five conditions that we're asking for would be additive to the six conditions contained in the staff report for a total of 11 conditions. And we have one modification to the staff report condition, and it's that fifth bullet on page three of the staff report that talks about the 10%. If you change the project design by more than 10%, you have to come back for a new CUP application, and we understand that requirement, and we're okay with that one. The second part of that condition indicates that any change in use of the surrounding area would also require us to come back in and get a new CUP. That one's a little more challenging for us as a developer. Getting a CUP is actually what gives us the certainty to move forward with a project. And that certainty allows us to make fairly substantial payments, whether it's to connect into the grid, to sign a contract with Evergy so that they get some equipment that they need, sign up an engineering contractor to come and do a final design for us, and to order this massive equipment that would be coming in, I mean massive cost. They're actually relatively, you know, small tractor-trailer-sized pieces of equipment, but they have a massive price tag. And so having a CUP is what allows us to feel certainty that we can come in and build this project, once we get all of the ducks in a row. So having a condition in a permit that says that we have to come back if somebody else builds something elsewhere in the vicinity is something that's really challenging for us, could even potentially be like a fatal flaw for us. And so we would appreciate a fairly simple revision to that fifth bullet in the report to delete the words starting with "or any change in use" through the end of that sentence of that bullet. So we respectfully request that the commission exercise their right to make all five of these modifications, as well as the, you know, the modification to the one condition in the staff report as a condition of approval of the SUP. We feel that we have really met all of the standards that were so painstakingly put together over the last couple of years for this kind of use in the county. We'll go to the final slide here just to open it up to any questions, but, you know, again, we just want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the commission members for taking the time and effort to create the regulations that provided the clear standards and guidance that I think we all appreciate at this time. So we're here again to answer any questions that you might have, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any quick questions?
Review that comment you made about something happening in the neighborhood. Let's talk about that again.
Yes.
Which section is that?
Yeah, I'm trying to find that. What is that?
It's a bullet from the staff. It's what he read in the staff report.
Yeah, what exactly? Let's go over that.
It's on page three, and it's the fifth bullet down.
Excuse me, because of the extended timeline for the construction start date, and it's that last sentence where it says, "or any change in use of the surrounding area." That's the one I pointed out to you all when I was reading this, that I'm not anticipating any changes, but this is one of those situations where, you know, in the event, there might be something going in, they may have to do this, but it's, again, it's up to your discretion if you want to...
But this is what you put in.
That's what I put in.
Okay. I didn't remember seeing this on the stuff we put in.
No, no.
Okay. Discuss how to handle that.
So...
Well, I know you don't want it, but...
No, I mean...
Better explain to us for everybody.
Absolutely. So I think that the, in the staff report, it's a recommendation. It's a recommendation that the commission should consider, putting in a condition that states that if a conditional use permit is issued to us, if somebody else comes in sooner and builds something else, that we would actually have to come back in before we reach the end of our five-year period and we started construction, we would have to come back in and get a new permit. And I think that the, I think that the intent of the conditional use permit process, like not just here in the county, but sort of statewide, nationwide, is that it provides certainty for a certain use. And we completely understand that this is a different use. You know, it's more unusual than you're used to, maybe not used to having projects that take five years to get through the development cycle before you actually hit the shovel in the ground. But that is the reality for an energy project of this size. So it's almost like this CUP, if issued, would be noticed to all the surrounding landowners that there's an energy storage use approved here, and so the other uses would accommodate this CUP. As Tim said, he doesn't expect anything, any other uses to be here, but that's not, that's a hard risk for us.
But now's the time to address it.
Well, yeah, and the reason...
You got to address that now, because that's not fair to you.
Exactly.
The, the reason, though, part of that is, it's a reversion to when I was a city planner, and I apologize for that. Sometimes I...
Things change more frequently.
Yes. And that's why I put that in there. And so because this is in a rural area, there's probably not going to be any changes, but I wanted to include that just as a way of, really to also, that's done to protect the applicant as well, because if something does change that could potentially impact, like, let's say, traffic flow and that sort of thing in that area, in and out, which that wouldn't be an issue with this case, but that's just something that you all can, if you want to, you can, you can just disregard that if you want, but it was just something that I felt, you know, compelled to put in.
I think it's a topic of discussion. Boy, everybody's talking.
I don't see this...
What's everybody think of that?
I don't see a need for it.
No, I don't either.
I don't think it's fair to the applicant, whatever the applicant may be, that somebody can come in, buy...
Could be a housing development or something else.
Right. Three years from now, you learn to do something, and guess what?
Yeah, I think it's a precedent we don't want to set.
No, not at all. I don't like that. Don't agree with me, just, I don't like the wording of that. That's not fair to any applicant.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I would too, I believe.
So scratch that as...
We'll scratch it.
Okay. I mean, I wouldn't want to be in your position, and three years from now, you want to do something beside me, so I can't do it now.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that understanding, understanding that it came from a good place, but appreciate your understanding.
Okay. Any other questions briefly? Would anybody else like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Are you guys wrapping it up?
No, we're wrapping it up.
Okay.
Available for questions. Thank you so much.
All right.
I have one thing.
Sure.
That facility is going to be 1,000 feet off of west of Simpson Road, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Approximately 1,000 feet.
Yes, approximately 1,000 feet.
Okay. You could tell it's all up from the pictures, obviously didn't know how far, but...
Right.
And you stated it in the, in your presentation, too. I saw it in the, I went through your volume there. I happen to see that in there, too, so...
Yes. Yep, you've got it. It's approximately 1,000 feet setback from the road, low profile. And there's a little topography there, too. If you walk the site, it kind of heads downhill further you get from the road, so it actually is even a little bit more viewed or hidden from view from Simpson.
Speaking of the topography, since you brought that up, the only leveling that you're going to do is the actual site of where the containers are going to be, correct?
So it would be the container... So, it would be the containers, the substation, you know, we, we want to make the access roads really accessible for people to be able to safely drive around the facility.
In the 15 acres, is all that's going to be affected on leveling?
15, yes, yep, you got it.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
You got it.
Thanks. Any other questions from the board, while the applicant's up here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to public comment, and before we begin, I would just like to go over a couple of rules for public comment, please.
You can start with number two.
What's that?
Start with number two.
Yes. Okay, we're going to open the public comment to allow each speaker no more than three minutes, and I would ask that everybody please respect the three minutes, so we can get through everyone, and you don't take people's time behind you. In the interest of time and due process, please try not to repeat a comment or a question from a previous speaker. Each speaker must direct all comments and questions to the commission, not the applicant or staff. The applicant and staff will be allowed to answer and respond to any questions that either the public or the commission has for them. Each member of the public will be allowed to speak only once. If the speaker is providing comments for anyone not in attendance, they must include these comments and any comments they may have within the three minutes allowed. All present must be civil and considerate towards those providing comments to the applicant. Outbursts, clapping, or any interruption will not be tolerated, and disruptive individuals will be escorted out. If disruption persists, the chair will close the public comment and continue the hearing next month. We are going to set a hard out of 10:00 PM, and we're going to close public comment at about 9:45, so we can allow the applicant to respond to any questions, and allow the board to make any decisions, whether we're going to approve, deny, table, or whatever we're going to do, so we can close by 10:00 PM. So, with that being said, is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment?
One quick addition to the public. If you feel like you have some additional comments after tonight that you would like to express, I've, you can email them to me, or write them out, and drop them off at my office. I've got my cards here, if anybody wants to pick one up and email me, or come by the office, so...
For extended comments.
Yeah.
And also, we do have a sign-in sheet. If anybody hasn't signed in, please do so on your way out if you can, please. So is there anybody from the comment that would like, or from the public that would like to comment or speak? I'll leave it open for a little bit. Okay, please state your name and your address, please.
Johnny Keller, 812 Sheridan here in Salina. Thank you for hearing me today, and thank everyone for being here. I didn't think I'd be the first one up. I've got some questions on, in the event of a fire, and these are lithium batteries, what is the process of containing it, and what, since there's no, probably any water out there, what is the EMS going to do to respond and take care of it? Can anyone answer that now, or did I just continue?
Do you, do you just have one single question?
No, I got more.
Do you have a series of questions?
I've got about five.
Okay, can you go ahead and answer those?
I can.
And sum those up afterwards, and we'll, we'll discuss those.
Okay, so we, the, has there been an environmental impact study done on this, in the event of a fire, and what could possibly happen with lithium and the heavy metals such as cobalt and nickel and manganese, which come as a result of those fires? I'm a former hazmat certifier, so I know a little bit about this stuff, and having to transport it on aircraft and maritime, it's always been a big problem of how it's stored. I know that there's several protocols here, and a lot of facilities are being used across the country, but I just want to know what we're doing. Since I live in Salina, and the wind blows out of the south a lot, that kind of concerns me. And our water supply, part of it, comes off the Smoky Hill River for our city. How would that water, if they had to have water on that site, how would that water be replenished? Is there a long, a large enough water main to keep up with what would be needed? I was told by a firefighter, just one car on fire, a Tesla, you're looking at about 20,000 gallons of water. The other thing is, how are these cells going to be anchored with the notorious Kansas winds that we have? And sometimes those peak winds are tornado level. And what is the requirement for insurance for them? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we do have a couple of questions. Can, can staff answer some of these questions briefly? Because I do believe most of the questions that you have asked have been gone over and are in the report.
Well, I think as far as like the environmental impact studies, the, that hasn't, I believe the applicant can answer most of these better than I can. The environmental impact process for fire mitigation, that's something that's already, you know, in the works for, with our emergency management and the fire chiefs. And like I say, that's one of those things that's going to change, you know, prior to the actual construction date in a few years, so they're, they're working on it. It's something that's in progress, and they've got a draft, I think, that they've been, that they've worked with, and that's going to be kind of a base for them, that they'll review every year. As far as water, my understanding is that the water usage in there is, that would be a fire district question, if there, if it involves a fire, if, and I think that the applicant has stated that water won't be used for the, for this particular storage facility. The anchoring, that's something, again, that would probably, that's, that's addressed in the plan that the applicant has submitted, and it does seem to be adequate. I mean, it's a, it's something that they would have to, they would, again, express better than I can. That would also go through, any kind of anchoring would go through a commercial permit review through, in cooperation with city staff to review, to make sure that the, that meets our codes for that type of wind velocity. And insurance, I believe it's a 1.5 million liability on that, if I remember correctly.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This brings up a good point.
Yes, sir.
A lot of these questions were answered in the documentation.
Yes.
And if we're going to continue getting the same questions over and over tonight, we're going to go past 10 o'clock.
Yep.
I would prefer those who have actually read the documentation, who have legitimate concerns, to bring to us, so we can shorten the timeframe up. I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Is, is that document available to the public?
On the website, yes.
That's what I thought.
All the appendices are on the website.
So everyone here is welcome to read all, how many of the pages?
394 pages. Read them all.
I read them all. That's what I've been doing all week.
Emergency response plan, I believe, is there. It addresses the water issues.
Addresses the anchoring.
It's addressed, it's in the report.
The chemistry of the batteries, everything.
I could add, too, that they've, they've specified two 24,000 gallons.
Yes, they have.
And one at each gate available, along with, of course, the fire district tankers, but they will have two 24,000 gallon tanks out there on the facility.
I think that also complies with that FPA codes, is that correct? Right, that was in the report.
Some people actually read, yes.
Yep, that was in the report.
I could try to know what I'm talking about sometimes.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate it. Okay, we'll wrap that up, and we may hit on some more of those questions going down the line, but, yeah, a lot of these questions have been answered. We have gone over this a lot in, in past meetings. You're more than welcome to get on the website and kind of review yourself as well. But that being said, we'll open it back up to public comment. Would anybody else like to come to the podium to address the board?
Bill DeSylvie, 4945 South Simpson, Gipson. I remember those of you that were on the same commission a couple of years ago, when we got before the county commission and they voted it down. I remember the primary reason that you gave being the technology wasn't ready. Well, guess what? This is the same tech, there's been no big moonshot project that's made it 100 times safer since then. Nothing has changed, and yet, all of you appear to be so wanting to sign off on this. What you need, what you seem to have forgotten is, we realize you can't make everybody happy. We're quite aware of that. But what you seem to have lost sight of is the fact that the basis for this great experiment we call the United States is governance via the consent of the governed. You have not had our consent since day one on this.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the public like to speak?
Teresa Swisher, 4853 East McReynolds Road. I have to say, that was quite a CUP for 1,065 pages, and that's a lot of information, I will give you that. Being a community member within a mile and a half distance from the proposed battery energy storage, I do have serious concerns over the safety of the BEST and how it were, what would happen if it were to fail. In their, I'm going to put that underneath, in their CUP, they, the EPA On Scene Coordinator Lithium Ion Battery Response Guide talks about thermal runaway and all the chemicals that it's going to put out. Their recommendation is to let it burn, so therefore, the chemicals are going to have to go someplace, they're going to go into the atmosphere. The flammable gases, it says flammable and combustible gases, corrosive gases, toxic gases, and toxic liquids, heavy metals. Let it burn, and what is the impact of the surrounding community if that happens? You guys say it's safe, and I don't have a doubt that that's what you're planning, that it is safe, but the Titanic wasn't supposed to sink either, and it did. So, the CUP gives a lot of information on thermal runaway. I get that if Plus Power and Mountain Peak Energy LLC tell us of the potential hazardous, hazards in their CUP of what could happen, what is their liability if it does happen? Do they say, "We let you know of all this stuff that could happen, and it's now on you guys?" Not sure. I am concerned that the list of hazardous flammable gases, corrosive gases that are going to be put in the air, should it ever catch on fire? And God forbid it does, truly. I'm not willing to risk it, even though Plus Power and Mountain Peak Energy tell us how safe it is. I don't think that you should trust that either, because it does happen. Is it worth 18.5 million in pilot money that they're proposing? Because that seems to be a big, big factor. And that 18 and a half million is over 20 years. Is the community worth that? Is, is the possibility of what could happen worth that? I don't think it is. My question is, if an extraordinary event happens, we've asked, in your CUP, you've asked them for a million and a half liability bond. And, and I was, made an extra note that said, that their CUP says it includes extraordinary events. So if there is an event, a million and a half isn't going to do diddly. I mean, it really isn't. I mean, most farms in that area carry more liability than 1.5 million. I think you guys need to strongly, strongly reconsider that amount, and make it something that's, that's going to hold, put some teeth in things.
Can I have you wrap it up? We're at three minutes.
Yep. My other question was about noise. Has the baseline been done? Baseline noise been done, do you know?
I believe it's in the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to ask you guys.
I believe it's in the report. It's in the report.
I don't, I thought it said that it was going to be done...
One week prior to...
Oh, it was prior to the...
Yeah, okay, okay. So my question is, will the noise, noise tests be, be completed in all stages of running? Will it be, be tested at nighttime? Will it be tested during peak times? Is this going to be a complete study, or is this just going to be a, a one-time, go out in the middle of the afternoon and, and do some, some noise testing?
Okay. Again, ask you to wrap it up?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, thank you. Again, just to allow everyone an opportunity to speak. Thank you, Teresa.
And I should point out that emergency management is here with the fire chiefs as well, if there's any questions about fire safety or whatever.
I will say, the other, the other thing that I have is throughout that, I'm sorry.
I can't, I'm sorry, you can only come to the podium once, and you have your three minutes. I apologize, we got to keep the meeting in order. I'm sorry.
I need something to ask that.
Brooke Swisher, 6398 South Woodward Road. Her next question was, throughout the CUP, it states that emergency management department will advise the community. What is the actual plan? It states there will be sirens and lights at the site. How far will these be seen and heard? How long will it take for e, emergency management to advise the community? If it's windy and it is a lot of time here, time is crucial. The people at the BEST site will have PPE and breathing apparatus, what about the public? How will we be protected? And I think we've proven that your constituents don't want this in our area, so please keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else from the public like to comment? Please state your name and address.
Ron Kinkler, 3457 East Highway, Cape Forest area, Kansas. I've been attending most all these meetings, and I know all the feedback and everything, but a little tidbit for you guys. I'm trying to figure out the benefit of this battery system. Summit does not power my house, and it probably doesn't power anybody's farming ranch out there, so I don't know where the benefit is. Ours comes from south of Kubota or Gipson Sub. Thanks for what you do. Just say no.
Please state your name and address.
Carolyn Sichely, 5967 East McReynolds Road. I'll be brief and focus on kind of the main reasons why, obviously, I, as you know, I've been to most of these meetings, and there's, I'm a lifelong rural Kansas resident in this area. First, this project is industrial, and I think we all know that the, everything is zoned around us, is agriculture, it was obviously mentioned in the, in the report, and that's meant to protect our farmland, our rural views, and our property values. We are very protective of our, of our farmland, and having this bring more industrial buildings, 24/7 lighting, fencing, noise, 24,000 gallon water tanks and whatnot into, you know, our agricultural rural area is not what we want. Second, the proximity, the proximity to homes, I still feel like is a serious concern. The adopted regulations do not include the wider setbacks that we specifically asked for. During the meetings that this was discussed, it was stated openly that if wider setbacks were adopted, no substation in the county would qualify for BEST. And that's a concern to me, because that felt like it was the primary... And that's a concern to me, because that felt like it was the primary reason why the communities requested setbacks were rejected. And what was not discussed, and what continues to be overlooked, is how reduced setbacks directly impact our homes, our safety, the community aesthetics, and our property values. Our concerns were dismissed due to the financial feasibility for the developer, not for the safety and quality of life for the people living next to it. And as a resident in the area, and that's something, obviously, that I'm very passionate about, and I feel like our concerns were not addressed. Third, the safety risks remain significant, and I don't feel like our county is prepared, as we've already been mentioned many times this evening. I feel like whenever a hazmat expert is concerned about, you know, fallout in Salina, us being, you know, very close to the property is very concerning to me. I also feel like we have to kind of look at other Kansas communities that are around us, such as the Harvey County decision to enact a moratorium to hold off on best units until further research has been done, and, you know, the technology continues to develop, to develop the safety protocols, the data from other best units. And I feel like it would be in all of our best interest to hold off, you know, another three to five years until this develops further, and we can have, you know, better safety standards in place and protect our safety. And I also wanted to mention that national policy is also shifting towards greater caution. I'm sure you all are aware from research that California's new Senate Bill 283 has recently been in place after the Moss Landing Fire, and it strengthens environmental review and oversight for energy storage facilities. So I feel like when even the most experienced states are tightening regulations, that rural Kansas with fewer emergency resources must be especially cautious.
Okay. I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, if you can. You passed your three minutes. You have a couple of seconds?
Okay. Nope, I'm, I'm done. So I respectfully ask the commission to deny or delay this application until comprehensive, independently verified safety precautions and setbacks are in place. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Would anybody else like to come to the podium? I think we may have one more. Please state your name and address.
Stan Chipperfield, 5069 East McReynolds Road. It was pointed out how these systems might or would definitely lower our energy costs. So is that, will that be a reality? Or is it something to talk about?
Anybody else from the public like to make any comment? Okay. I don't think that we'll have anymore, so I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, and we'll bring it back to the commission. And Tim, you did say that there are fire marshals possibly here. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Fire chiefs.
For the fire chief, excuse me. Anybody have any direct questions to the fire chief?
Emergency managers.
And emergency management, I'm sorry.
I would like to hear their opinion on the application and what they put in for the emergency response plan.
Especially since some of them have been in discussions with the plus power.
Okay.
Are you asking for public comment or question to the emergency?
This is, this will be... This will be a direct question to emergency management.
From us or you?
From us.
To you.
To emergency management.
To Michelle.
If they are here.
She's here.
So are you gonna have them answer the questions we asked?
No, we'll be doing that throughout the meeting.
This is a specific question that we had from the documentation.
Good evening. Michelle Wise, Director of Emergency Management for Slade County. Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question I had was based on, you know, their application and what they're meeting with emergency management, and any additional information you can provide or explanation related to that discussion?
Sure. So obviously, we met and we had some conversations back in '23 when they initially started that process. I will say that there was more heavily involvement with my office due to the regulations that you guys had put forth requiring my office to be part of that planning process. So personally, I do thank you for that. Most of the time, I get looped in on the backend, and we just kind of make things work. This process was more with my office and conjunction with the fire marshal's office, since the city fire marshal in Cavasik can probably bail me out here while I slaughter what his role is. He does the commercial permitting process, so he sets the regulations, and he'll go over the code side of it. I am more looking at it as the guise of the liaison for Rural Fire and the ensuring, obviously, that it is a safe process for the whole community. So to answer the question about the alert system, much to what they said, the project will not start until 2030. Personally, I would see, yes, we have procedures in place that could potentially work for that. You guys mentioned technology changes over the years. My industry technology has changed over the years, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worst. That is why I have not put something down in, like, writing on what we're going to do. One thing that we're looking at right now is to become an IPOS certified county. So that would mean that essentially just draw a polygon in an area. Whether you want it or not, your cell phone will get an alert. If that process goes forth and we do get that approval, then that could be a tool that we use for this. Unfortunately, that's not been awarded to us yet. We're still in the process of doing that, which is why I haven't come out and said, like, that is for sure what we're doing. I like that better than a system that relies on you opting into it, because in our current alert system, not a lot of people alert to it. As far as the lighting and sirens, they don't exist right now, so it's hard for me to, like, tell you anything about it. It will certainly be something that we look at when it is closer to the implementation of the project. As far as the Rural Fire side of it, they have not been as heavily involved in it this time around. Their stance has been they will, they will do what is required for them. They are public servants. They don't feel like they really have much of a say whether you want them to protect this area or not. They're going to do that with the resources and manpower that they have available. I would just like to remind the public that this is a volunteer fire district. They are not paid or compensated for this. They go to training when they have time and availability, and they respond to calls when they have that same time and availability. Did I answer?
Has there been training available to them for this specifically yet?
We have brought in, on the county side, I received a hazardous materials emergency response grant, and we did do some lithium ion battery training, but that was more in the sense we were seeing a lot more house fires for your, like, power tools, and that was what it focused on mainly. There was a small portion on best systems, to which they were advised, obviously, how to approach a structure if it was on fire, and it, otherwise, it did kind of emphasize the bodily harm that it could cause to first responders if those systems weren't handled properly in the response. Anything else?
Does anybody else have any specific questions for Michelle?
Be here all night if you come up with something else.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Anybody else on the board have any further questions for emergency management?
No, we're dismissed.
Do you have any further questions for the fire chief?
Nope.
Okay. So then I guess we can just bring it back to the board for a general discussion. Uh, let's see. And the way that I'm seeing it here, we have to review these 11 conditions. Is that correct? Essentially, this evening somewhat?
Well, your, your...
Your consideration of this would be to look at those and see if the plan conforms, you agree with staff in saying that the plan conforms with what, you know, what the applicant has proposed or submitted this evening.
Well, first of all, for the board, from Tim's conditional, conditions required for approval, where he laid out in the 16 bullets here, does anybody have any questions or issues with those that he is adding on here for approval before we jump into what they were asking for, for their conditions?
In other words, do you see anything based on what was, what you've seen tonight that would contradict anything that, you know, or be concerned to you?
Yeah. I think that this is okay here. Well, what do you guys think? Do we have any opinions? Do we have any?
I have one question I want to put to the applicant. It was, the public brought up that we're way too low on liability insurance. Would you address that? What do you normally carry? I think, what did we put on there? 1.5?
But we did 1.5.
How does that compare to? Address how the public looks at that. 1.5 being enough?
Sure. So that was what was written into your regulations, and so that's what we proposed.
My question is, what do you normally?
Yeah. I'm trying to crowdsource that answer for you right now, actually, Mr. Commissioner.
Come on, come on.
Because we do have eight sites that are operating right now, and I don't have that answer off the top of my head, and I'm not sure...
That seems extremely low.
Yes.
Okay. We, um...
15 million would probably be a little bit better.
We, uh...
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, is nowhere...
I was thinking that we could double it to 3 million.
You know, as a director of the Prescribed Burn Association, I carry a $2 million liability in case I burn something I shouldn't. So that is pretty ridiculous to assume, and I don't know how we even allowed 1.5 to go through. It should have been 15.
I will say, from my perspective and my point of view, I'm, I'm not a commercial insurance expert. I don't know. When we, when we come up with a number, you know, we kind of agreed as a board that this was what we would land on.
Well, when I spoke with insurance agents...
Yes.
They told me, Paul, all you gotta do is catch one barn on fire out here that's got a John Deere tractor in it, and you've already exceeded your liability.
Right.
Now, we're talking about an area of Saline County that could be affected, not just one little firm. So...
So you really can't tell me what you're doing in other sites?
I can tell you.
I mean, on my end, 10, 15 million, that's where we start.
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I don't. I can try and get it here, while, after I sit back down.
Okay, well...
We could regroup, maybe. We could come back to it at the end. Thank you.
Okay.
It was good, it was brought up by the public, and I thought it was a good topic. Enough.
It is, and this is, you know, this is what we currently have. This is still adjustable, correct?
Yeah, it is.
Is that one and a half million per incidence or per person?
The way it's stated in there, it's per incident.
Yeah, per incident.
I believe that's how it is.
Yeah.
Now, we've, we've spent two years writing this.
I know, I was part of it.
We've spent two years trying to educate the public. We've spent two years getting public input on this.
Yeah.
So it's not something brand new to us. So when you talk facility, that's what, 18 million dollars, you're telling me? Much more. So a million dollars liability is no go.
Yes. Yes, we'll definitely increase that.
And when you, Paul, did discuss with an insurance provider, did, did they give you any better roundabout?
Well, I wanted 15 on this when I originally wrote it up, and then we ended up with 1.5 on it. Because we did that with another one of them.
Could I give a little background?
Yeah, sure. Go right ahead.
So Alan Anderson, I'm with the Pulse on Law Firm, representing Plus Power, also a professor at the University of Kansas Law School, and we have 51 wind projects around the country. I think I've worked on just about all of them on that in this time. So you have a multitude of layers of protection. So insurance is really the, probably the least impactful. It's important, but the least impactful. And 15 is much higher than I've seen on any of the wind projects, which are even bigger projects in that scale. What you have is they'll have this project, which will be financed through a bank. So the banks will require all sorts of conditions, and the, and the project itself has to be operating. So the company, you're backed by the company to start with. Then the insurance is the backup from that. So if you look at the context of the projects, there, there just aren't nowhere, nowhere near the 15 million I'm seeing.
No, they're not, but there are some incidences that have, that have happened that have exceeded that rate across this country. And I'm not talking about wind turbines. I'm talking about...
Right, you're talking about storage. Yeah, and in each of those cases, of course, there hasn't been a situation where someone's been left without those being taken care of, because there's other backstops that make the necessity for that large of an insurance policy not required. And so that's why, again, it's, it's not saying that that's not important, it's that you have those other backstops, so you need to have...
But we don't see those backstops right now.
Yeah, what are they? No, correct, so it's the finance.
We do not see them right now. Well, so we have to deal with what we can right now.
Totally understand. That's why I'm just trying to give some context into this, not, because it's not saying it's not an important, you know, part of this, this whole process. It's giving a little context of the, of the other projects that are of similar nature, as well as kind of the big picture.
Wind towers are not of similar nature here.
It's a big infrastructure project where there can be incidents similar. In this case, frankly, it's more contained in many regards.
Sorry, we're crowdsourcing the answer, and I will say, there's a tremendous amount of texting going on as people are trying to figure out what, what appropriate sort of national standard. But I think what Alan was trying to say is, like, one of the additional backstops that you do see is with a decommissioning agreement in place, the company that has the special use permit or conditional use permit has to prove their own financial backing to have the decommissioning in place, which is, on some level, a financial proof that would work in case, you know, in lieu of also the insurance. And neither Alan and I have said that the 1.5, you know, we also think that, I think Christina said it here too, that that seems low, but also there are other layers, layers that you do see, including a decommissioning agreement, that sort of make that a different setting.
Yeah, well, you think, what we had in the application is actually what's in the ordinance, so that, that's why you'll see that there.
That's right.
So I believe that we're in somewhat of agreements that we need to increase the insurance amount, but what is the number gonna be?
We'll find out.
Which that...
We'll negotiate that one.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, it's not really the property, it's the surrounding area that we're looking after.
Correct.
The issue that we run into also is keeping in mind that will that have to be adjusted in five years before they start construction?
Exactly. Because we're still five years away from anything we do.
Could I, could I propose maybe something as we look into this? This could be a condition, that the ultimate insurance amount be a negotiated requirement, so that we would have to come to an agreement on that, that would allow us time to, you know, both parties provide more information on that. There's no need, we'd have to kind of guess at it right now.
That's a good suggestion. I like that. Okay.
I will tell the commission that yesterday I sent a link to an article which I read in a national standards publication. It was from this summer. national standards publication. It was from this summer about best facilities. It talked about Texas and the number of facilities there, and the safety and the lack of problems. I asked that it be sent out to everyone, and Janelle was busy and it slipped by her. So I would like everyone to have a chance to look at that, and will, will you put that on the website too, please, Janelle?
Well, that would be a good question for Josh. Would you mind coming back up to the podium?
Got me texting, Paul. I, I knew that.
You're gonna have to repeat the question.
The question will be, how many best systems are currently active in the U.S.?
Oh, gosh. Across the United States, the most by far are in Texas and California.
Correct.
In Texas, I'll answer it this way. In Texas, in this year alone, they're installing seven gigawatts of, of installed batteries, and put that in perspective. We have around eight, my wife's now in the back, she can help me on wind energy, we're at what, eight, eight and a half gigawatts in the state? Little over nine and a half gigawatts. So that tells you, in one year's time, they're gonna do seven, seven gigs of, of batteries in, in this state of Texas, and so. And then, as we learned from DSNO Electric, they apparently now have two battery systems that they're purchasing, so I think there's, there's various sizes of them, so it's hard to count. I mean, base power in Texas is putting.
Is it safe to say there's about 1,000 sites since 2020 to 2025?
Hundreds of commercial utility scale sites. Yeah, but, but definitely, yeah.
Yeah. There's about 978 in the database right now.
Okay. Yeah.
Now, how many of those roughly hundreds have failed this year? How many have had an incident this year? It's in the database that you guys report to.
Do you know the answer?
I wouldn't be asking you.
I know, I think you do, Paul. I've, I've been around long enough, I know. I don't know the answer.
There are five.
Okay, yeah.
There are five that had an incident. Which is the one that everybody refers to?
Moss landing.
And why did moss landing fail?
Lots of.
Oh, by the way, which moss landing failed?
Yeah, the oldest, was it contained in the building?
Phase one, oldest one. With what kind of batteries?
Oh, great.
Lithium, cadmium, manganese, cobalt. By the way, which one?
I feel bad, yeah.
Ones are you guys proposing?
Lithium, lithium iron phosphate, LFP.
Not the same kind of battery, is it?
Yes, and my apologies, Brian Scholl, Gilbert, Arizona. 25 years in the fire service, just retired from the Phoenix Fire Department. Yes, nickel, manganese, cobalt, heavy metal, heavy metal, heavy metal. Not these. So yes, 100%, first generation. And most of the incidents are that first generation when they became way before the codes, and I'm on the codes, and we've come a long way in the codes, so.
And what was the failure rate? Why did it continue to ramp out?
A lot of reasons that it ramped out. One was, it was inside of a building, inside of a concrete building that wasn't designed for a battery system. These are unoccupied cabinets, these are appliances. In the fire service, we risk a lot to save a lot. This is just an appliance. We don't risk anything for an appliance.
Was there any retardant between the containers?
There is nothing between the containers. It had a makeshift type sprinkler system, but once again, it just wasn't designed for that building, and that was the biggest cause. And the interesting thing, if you look at moss landing on a totality basis, there's a bunch of these exact same type batteries on the backside just doing their thing.
Oh, I'm just curious, where was this set at? What environmentally sensitive area was this particular location?
Uh, it was, it was a wetland, right? And then an old coal plant, I mean, there's so many, so many things we can go through with this.
Pacific Ocean too, wasn't it?
That as well, so. But yes, first generation batteries, no codes when, when those were installed. We are now three or four generations in NFPA 85, which I am on that committee to make up the safety standards.
That's correct, yeah. Now, another question I have is, when, if there is an incident, when does it typically occur?
Um, normally during.
Timeframe?
Normally during charging or discharging, but it all depends. But the way we test these nowadays is we take that cell, which is the lowest level, and we make it go into thermal runaway, and does it propagate? And if it propagates, it fails. But then we go, hey, let's go, let's try the whole module. Put that in thermal runaway, does it propagate? If it does, it fails. Then we go to the unit level. If we have a unit level, does it propagate? And as long as it doesn't propagate, then it gets listed by UL. And that's the big key, big difference between that first generation battery. They didn't do that kind of stuff. Also, big difference between electric vehicles. No testing, no listing, no nothing. Micro mobility, same thing, your cellphone that you're probably sitting on. Not listed, not regulated, like these are. So big difference between the batteries.
Thank you for.
Yeah, this is why we make reference to all of the NFPA codes.
And I appreciate that.
All of these fall within the UL. They've all been tested, they've all been rated. They have to pass these tests in order to get out into production.
Correct.
But I think the biggest point we need to take home here is there's been five incidents this year with nine, with in excess of 900 best systems out there being operated right now.
And then I would also say that all five were first generation. Not the newer stuff. 100%.
Right. And we've got five more years of technology ahead of us, right?
And five more years of codes as well. So we're gonna be in, well, in five years, yeah. But as of right now, our codes, our codes are solid, like you said.
What's the first incident that we identify a runaway?
The first incident that we had.
What is the first thing that we're, we're gonna know when there is an actual potential runaway?
First, first thing you're gonna know is, it's gonna go out of voltage or temperature. And all these systems are required by code, have a battery management system that actually is monitoring each individual cell for voltage and temperature. If it goes out of spec on either one, they can shut down that cell and then stop that thermal runaway from happening. And that's the best thing we got going on right now.
What is the second thing that happens after that thing continues to heat up? Smoke.
There is smoke, yes, I agree.
And then the last thing is?
Potentially fire.
Fire. Okay. Do you have sensors that you're gonna identify the heat buildup?
There's gonna be smoke and, and heat detection required by code.
For the cell or for the container?
For the container, but the battery management system is the one that actually does the cell level.
Correct. Now, how is EMS, how is Michelle gonna be notified that there's a potential failure?
It's gonna go through their, through their fire alarm system and dispatch like any other building that has a fire alarm system.
But that fire alarm system is stuck in the middle of rural, rural part of the county. How is Michelle gonna be notified?
Oh, with technology these days, it could be cellular, it could be, you know, internet based, like, I mean, we have a lot of remote, not just batteries, you know, anything in general has a fire alarm system.
At what point will Michelle be notified?
When she tells us what point it is, and we call the sequence of operation. At what point does Michelle want to be notified? And we put that in the actual fire alarm system. Basically, brain of it saying, at this point, we're gonna dispatch Michelle. At this point, we're gonna dispatch the local technicians. That's what we do.
Okay. My biggest concern is there is a school within two miles of that site. The prevailing wind direction for basically eight months out of the year is north or northeast or northwest. That is the direction in which that smoke is gonna go towards that school. How much time are they gonna have to evacuate that school by the time you notify Michelle?
Well, first of all, the battery management system's gonna know it ahead of time, but if you look at the data that we've collected from the newer generation batteries, the LFP, there's nothing in that smoke that is outside any kind of federal guidelines that gets out. It's basically very similar to a house fire. We have so much plastics and fire retardants in our houses. That's a way worse fire smoke situation than these batteries. And there's tests out there, there's reports from Escondido, reports from Monterey County, California, that show they took samples of the smoke, took samples of the water runoff. Nothing in either of those was outside federal guidelines.
And even if there was smoke, what is the method that would be used to reduce the smoke?
The ways we can reduce smoke, we use a fog pattern on our, on our nozzles and actually be able to push and manipulate smoke, something we do all the time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Of course. Came from sunny Arizona.
Stay here a couple more days, we'll show you what snow is.
When I stepped off that plane and that wind hit me, I was like, woo, we're not in Phoenix anymore.
My next question is to Christine. Christina, is that what you're asking? As was brought up by our audience, what benefit does your product serve us in Celine County?
Has a number of benefits.
Name one.
Handful of jobs. Local jobs, need to be there every day. Let's get some good training. Let's get some folks who are trained up on how to operate the next generation and the current generation of our electric grid.
And that is how many?
Handful, five, three to five. Yeah, just a handful.
Five jobs.
We're not, we acknowledge, we're not a huge job maker, but we make some, and every job counts, especially in your rural Kansas.
Okay.
We battery energy storage, I mentioned it earlier in the presentation. We store these batteries when the price of energy is low. And then when there's a peak demand, that's when the utility says, hey, discharge your batteries, I need it on the grid. So that, when they need it, it's a peak. The peak is the most expensive electricity of the day.
So you're peak shaving.
We're shaving the peak. So we're reducing the cost during the peak times of electricity demand and usage. That's something that applies to everybody.
Doesn't apply to me, I'm on DSNO.
Alan? Alan, you want to cover that one?
Well, the way all our utilities, including co-ops, work is they have generation that meets the baseload, which is the lowest point of the demand curve. Then they all, the utilities and co-ops, have to go out to the wholesale market. At that time, what they're doing is they're making the cost at the, at the peak time, which they don't have baseload generation for. It reduces that price, and that benefits all the utilities and all the co-ops. So that includes everyone because we all share the same grid. So whether you're connected to the same system right here on that, we're all connected into the pool, and reducing the wholesale cost benefits all the utilities and co-ops throughout.
So what other benefits do I receive as a citizen of Celine County?
Well, I'll, I'll name a couple more, and then Christine, I'll get it back to you for sure. So the first thing is, I think, is you all who are in a governmental function here, you're allowing landowner to use their land for a permitted use for an item that's in the, in your code, so you're, you're kind of using the system of how we do, you know, property rights and letting people use their land, so that's the first thing. You're, you're, you're working within the economic system that we have.
Keep in mind, our economic system here is preservation of farmland. So it goes contrary to what we're.
Well, so here's, here's the second part of it. What we've seen, if you go to Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, just came out with a 2025 report that said, what happens when communities, the University of Michigan has a similar one, when they host infrastructure like this? So what do they do? So here you have $18 million direct benefits, you can do different things. There's also enormous multiplier effect on the economics. People want to live where they have infrastructure, they have those dollars for the community, that could be schools, the schools will benefit. People want to live where the schools have the adequate resources and other infrastructure. So it is raising the, you know, the, the water for all the boats when we have systems that bring that kind of economic impact to communities. So what the report shows is that when communities allow for projects like this, it benefits all the infrastructure, stabilizes tax base, all those things. That benefits the entirety of the community.
But thanks to our infinite wisdom of our state legislature, we can't charge property taxes.
Well, so the, what you do.
So that does, that does us no good. We don't get any property tax from you.
So there's, there are a couple types of tax. That's the personal property tax, which right now, that, and that, by the way, could, I would anticipate could even change, but that's where there's, there's, as you've heard from the company, they're anticipating doing, working in agreement with the county for that, for other benefits through contribution.
No, I have not.
Okay, I think that's in, in the report and has been in part of different things, that that is.
I've read a lot.
Yeah. I think in the staff report, there is, there is mention of that, and that is part of the.
It's been mentioned.
There's a mention of the pilot.
No, no dollars. Pilot, yeah. No, no dollar amount has been.
Yeah, happy, happy to talk about that too specifically. And then, and then a myriad of other benefits from, there's also sales tax, there's real property tax. There's then the economic impact of all of those benefits as they flow through the community that are, that are pretty meaningful. One more though, let's just go back, I want to make sure we understand. This is an alternative. The, the only way to fix congestion points on the grid is right now, absent batteries, is to build more transmission lines. And so when we talk about, well, well, what do we get out of it? Alan and I have the sometimes distinct displeasure of also working on transmission lines, and I can promise you there's nothing harder to cite than a new transmission line because it goes right over people's properties, right through their backyards, and we plus Power can't help the fact that Summit Substation is really important and very congested, and the longer it stays congested, they're not gonna move Summit Substation. It's just going to continue to be a problem on the entire electric grid. And at some point, they're gonna say, we're gonna build more lines or make the lines that go in and out of it even bigger. And so we are a very compact, privately funded solution that otherwise all of us have to pay for new transmission lines. And those go on your bill as a DSNO customer, or your bill as an EverGee customer, or your bill on whatever transmission system or distribution system you, you are on, you're gonna have to pay for those. And so that's, even outside of, of any agreement that's made with the county, that's, that's a genuine benefit to immediate ratepayers here and ratepayers all over the place, when we can fix these problems with private financing. And, you know, kind of similar to that, then what it also does, and this is what you've seen, you know, Texas, who did the most battery storage last year, will do the most battery storage, I think, this year. What they've stated is not, not just the economic benefit, which is enormous, but also it's the, when we have weather events, which can be that time where we have an extended cold period through, you know, longer and colder than we anticipate, this could be the lifesaver to keep us from having disruption in service, something where we can't meet the need of the grid. And when Texas had that so many years ago, people died. What they did is so much battery storage, and that has prevented that, so from a reliability and a safety perspective, battery storage has been an absolute benefit that, that really can't even put a dollar amount on that. And then to the, to the, Hunter, Hunter can talk about, a little bit about also the, the financial part.
Good evening. I'm Hunter Armstrong with Plus Power, Senior Project Development Manager. I think the question that was asked earlier that we were navigating towards is, what's the benefit going to be? As the Board of County Commissioners instructed the county administrator to meet with us, this was multiple months ago, to discuss what some of these benefits would be. One in particular being the financial benefits in the event that, you know, property taxes at the state level are still in flux and a little bit undetermined right now. We wanted to ensure the, the impact to the county and the residents, so we are prepared to offer eight, over $18 million for, over the life of the project, which is 20 years.
Did I answer your question? Somewhat.
It's up to you guys now.
Anybody else have any questions for any of the applicants? Okay, so listed as some of the benefits that the county would receive. So I think another thing that we need to address is the, is the insurance, and again, I think, like I said, that may be able to be negotiated, correct?
We need to add that as a negotiation on one of the conditions.
Yeah, it'll probably need to be worked in there somewhere with proper wording. And yeah, that would be, need to be worked into the CUP there somewhere.
Should we turn that over to Mr. Hamilton to take care of ironing out?
Well.
Well, it would, if you guys could help me with the wording, that would be good, and then that way I could put it in the, as a condition. So like, maybe based on kind of what we were talking about, where you say that, you know, given the, again, the construction extended timeframe, that the insurance, liability insurance to be adjusted accordingly and negotiated to an amount acceptable to the county? That sound kind of.
I'm writing, yeah. Is there any type of formula they use on other facilities for how much insurance? Based on capacity or anything like that? Acreage, you're on. We're looking for some guidelines to word it.
No, I, I can appreciate that. And I do imagine, I'm not a tax expert, right, but we have a whole group that works on taxes. But we have a whole group that works on taxes and liability insurances. And I'm sure that they have a formula. And that's why I think it's probably most prudent to say that, you know, the county and the applicant will work together to come up with a reasonable amount that's like within industry standards.
Something like that.
Yes.
Paul's still writing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's some good wording. Stay there. Don't move. Don't move. Don't move.
I tried.
Given the extended construction timeframe, the insurance amount based off of industry standards will be negotiated between the applicant and the county before construction begins.
Before the CUP is issued.
CUP is going to be issued tonight if we have voted in.
Yes, before construction begins. And that wording sounded good. Yes.
Did you get most of that, Tim?
It's already written down. I'll hand it to him.
Okay. Excellent.
Repeat it.
Need me to say anything?
All right, well... Yes? Phil?
I'm going to muscle in here. Who's the county?
All of us.
Yeah, no. I don't think staff needs to be in the position of negotiating a final number. If Tim negotiates something, it needs to come back to this body for approval. So I think that should be in the condition.
You want me to set this as the Planning and Zoning County Board?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Simple.
Phil, what about the county commission?
Well, they take our recommendations.
They'll agree with our recommendation.
Yeah. Or change them.
Or not.
Right, or not.
Right.
Okay.
Given the extended construction timeframe, the insurance amount will be negotiated based on industry standards between the applicant and the county Planning and Zoning Board before construction begins.
Sounds good.
We in agreement?
I think that sounds correct.
That's number 17.
Will you send that to us?
You want me to take a picture of it and send it to you?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
All right, number 17.
You guys ask way too much. You're the only one. You guys got all your microphones on your phone on now?
We should have.
Given the extended construction timeframe, the insurance amount will be negotiated based on industry standards between the applicant and the county Planning and Zoning Board before construction begins. I'll send it to you.
And also just to clarify also on that one bullet point that I had where it talked about, I'll be removing that condition of, on any change of use in the surrounding area would require the applicant to reapply. I'll take that out as well. Is that correct?
It's correct. That needs removed.
Strike that line.
Which one is it?
Completely.
The, that's the one right here, the...
Bullet point.
The fifth bullet point. This is the, or any change in use of the surrounding area. Yep, I think that's agreed upon as well. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I was just wondering, they handed these out to us?
Yes.
Are we just going to add them on and we... What are we going to do with these?
Let me find mine again. That's the one the applicant gave, right?
Right, five, right. Five points.
These are the five requests that the applicant was making.
Because we need to, for example, we need to discuss the effective period. Because our current is 25-year. They're asking for the late start or increasing it to 30 years.
Oh, okay, the number, the third point here. So yeah, there's a 25-year effective period for CUPs?
Because currently our process is, that's based on, if it's approved tonight, it starts tonight.
Right.
Rather than they're asking for the five-year construction and approval period to start at that point. So they have a 25-year life of the CUP.
Right. Or a 30-year validity period?
Or change it to a 30-year to include that five-year construction and approval time.
The approach to...
Yeah.
I mean, that's a five-year extension essentially, which, I mean...
Extension or start, late start, probably wanted to find.
It's probably better to have it the way they have it here instead of saying 30 years. So it's the 25 years from when they're...
For when the project begins?
Right.
That way we can maintain the 25-year?
Yes.
At the commencement of operation.
Since this is unusual for us to put one out this far.
It's true.
I mean, that's how this started, as I recall.
I know, yeah. I mean, I don't necessarily see any concerns with that. That way we can keep it the same. Does anybody else have any issues with the timeline, the 25-year? Beginning at...
Commencement of operations.
Right, commencement of operations?
Yeah.
Any issues or questions? So I'd say this is okay, number three? To 25. Commencement.
Paul, did you have anything on number four there?
The grading?
No, she clarified. It was only the... Do we need to spell that out?
Only the area?
I guess we do, don't we?
So that we don't get left.
Because I believe the grading, the grading issue was also because of like the construction, the piles, the concrete. And it all has to be flat and safe based on the building codes.
I do have a question related to that. I don't know if the applicant could maybe answer that. With the grading, we know of the site prep and everything. Will that require additional grading for stormwater and drainage?
On the site?
Yeah.
So the requirement in the regulations is 5% of grading of the site area. And the site area is, wish I could pull back up that slide, but it's the area where all of the enclosures are and other electrical infrastructure.
The 15 acres, right.
That... A little less than that, but it's 100% graded. I mean, our whole site from fence to fence, you know, we remove the vegetation.
By doing that grading, is it going to create other dirt work for stormwater and other accessories?
Well, we are going to grade to send the drainage to the stormwater basins. So, yes, it's basically the whole site. Any best site typically is graded, you know, from one side to the other. It's 100% within the site area. So 100% of the site area.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there, we create additional grading or modifications for stormwater.
Right. No, it's...
Not outside of the best area.
Not outside the best area.
Right, not outside the site area.
Yeah, not outside of the best area.
The site area.
Site area.
Messing with his mind right now.
Okay, so yeah, I think that would be, they would need to do that in order to follow the codes.
And then I have a question about number five. Is it reasonable to limit a review in cost to $10,000?
Well, right now, we're open-ended. We have no...
We have no, we...
Yeah.
Well...
Tim can find a high-priced contractor.
Yeah, I'm not even certain. I know how much the reviews typically cost.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking.
Mm-hmm. Do we know, Tim?
Do we have any historical...
What do these typically cost?
Reviews that the county's doing now or...
I really don't know. I've not investigated that.
Compliance review?
Does it have to be adjusted for inflation?
I don't see how we can have any control over that.
No.
That we couldn't know.
And if it's $10,000 today, what's it going to be 30 years?
We have no control over.
We don't know what the costs are, so how can we put a limit on it?
Well, this... This is something that you all wrote up, the five...
What they want.
That Christina handed out, yeah. So, like we were saying up here a second ago, the reviewer is going to charge whatever they're going to charge, right? I mean, if it's 10,000 or 15 or 20, I mean...
If it's a compliance review, I'm thinking that it would be something similar to like what the, what we do already with our commercial permit reviews. We would do that on like, something similar to that every year on an annual basis. And I can't remember, you know, the 10,000 is not unreasonable, I don't think, but...
Well, let's talk 20 years from now. Right?
We can, you can make it, like I say, because of the timeframe. I'll leave that up to you guys to just kind of consider increasing if you feel it's necessary.
I think the wording, instead of shall not exceed 10,000, just shall be at the expense of the applicant.
That's what we have now.
And be done and not, and we don't need to put anything dollar figure in.
That's what we have.
Right.
That's what we have, yeah.
And don't even deal with this 10,000. Just leave it as, it's at the applicant's expense and not make this change.
Yeah, I don't know if I have a problem with having it at their expense if it's a compliance review.
Yeah.
To prove.
We don't need those extra, the 10,000.
The question is, the way our code is currently, though, that's the county defining that compliance review, right?
Just strike those 10,000 out of there completely and leave it the way we got it.
What I would say is that would be, yeah, that would be something that, you know, the compliance review again would be probably something similar to what we do already with commercial permit review. We would consult with staff, county staff, to make sure that it's, you know, but only this time it's with a third party, you know, so...
Yeah, it's out of our hands.
Would it be with staff is the question. Are we, is it something to be...
No, it's a third-party reviewer.
Yeah, this would just be a third-party person.
So do we have that in our guidelines? It's $10,000?
No.
No, that's what, that's what...
That's what they're requesting.
Ours just has the review.
The issue is that if it exceeds 10,000, then what's, how is that going to be handled? That's what you're going to...
Just strike the 10,000 question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I thought she had a comment.
I think the goal here was to try to just put, you know, some kind of certainty to it. And a compliance review, I think, as you heard from Tim, shouldn't be so far out of that. You know, so we started there. If it wanted to be adjusted by like a CPI or, you know, a percentage, that'd be fine. Or if we want to have to come together and have a reasonable reimbursement, that's probably another way to go. What you're trying to protect against is not you all here, not with Tim here, some situation where you get an extremely unreasonable party and we just have to deal with it at that time. So we're just trying to put certainty, which is rarely helpful. So I'd still, I'd still rather have that certainty. So if we put 15,000 with, you know, adjustment for, you know, interest or, you know, some kind of inflator, that would be one way to go. Or that we, you know, we just have to come to, you know, have some agreement as to a reasonable number.
I think it's very hard to put a dollar figure when we're talking a 25-year plan.
Right, yes.
Yeah, that's where, you know, if we're thinking about how it could increase or if we want to get to a situation where we have to come to an agreement. Again, a compliance review shouldn't be of the nature that is something so great. If we run into a situation where it requires a deep dive, that's a whole different situation. But again, just trying to create certainty wherever we can.
So if we said shall not exceed 15,000 with adjustment as needed for inflation?
Yeah.
Or other considerations?
I don't think dollar figures should be put on there at all, but that's my opinion. That's out of our hands. It's a third party.
Who, who contracts with a third party? Is it, would it be then us, correct, the county?
There would be a, there would be a coordinated effort between the applicant and the county staff to determine, you know, which the...
Who's going to do it?
Yeah.
How much it's going to cost.
Which is the best one, because, yeah. And then, you know, because they would actually, you know, it wouldn't be one of those things where, you know, it would be something we would have to negotiate, who would actually do the investigating on that. So if the applicant has a third party, we would have to check it out and see if we're okay with it, you know, and that's... Say, okay, you're going to have to get another one, you know, that kind of thing, so...
If it makes you more comfortable, I think we're comfortable just dropping the number and kind of going that route. We don't want to belabor this one too much. We're, again, trying to put certainty in there. But if it's creating kind of concern, happy to go that route. I'm confident we'll be able to keep in a reasonable space.
Well, then I think in that situation, we keep the same regulations that we have, correct?
Yeah.
And we would drop the five.
Strike a five.
Yeah, that way we don't have to change and rely on the CUP for that.
Going back to four.
Yes.
Can I ask the applicant a question? Christina, if you're going to grade that site, the 15 acres, what are you going to do with the topsoil?
So the regulations require that we cannot remove the topsoil from the parcel.
That's what I'm asking.
So our plan is that 1,000 feet that were set back off of the roadway, we're going to place the topsoil. We're basically going to store the topsoil for the life of the facility in the area that's outside of the site fence.
Are you going to make any mounds along the road to be able to reduce visibility, reduce sound, reduce whatever?
With a berm?
A berm.
We would be open to putting the topsoil in a shape that would, you know, benefit the county.
I'm not...
Right now, we were planning on just leveling it all out, stabilizing it with vegetation and just let it grow, you know, maintain it. It's underneath the power line, so we'd have to, you know, maintain it. We can't let it grow into tall trees or anything. But we just kind of were keeping it simple.
Oh, Dan, we need more trees out here. Why don't you grow some trees?
Yeah, right.
Not under the power line, though. So if you would like us to investigate...
No, I was asking a question. I just needed to know, what are you going to do with that?
It's all going to be stored on site.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I just needed that for my...
Yeah, I think that's the report here.
Grading shall be permitted, pardon me while I turn my mic on. Grading shall be permitted within the specific BSS site area necessary to provide proper foundation development and proper drainage. All topsoil will be stockpiled prior to land grading and the topsoil will be used on-site for revegetation. Suitable?
I like it. Four.
About stored instead of stockpiled.
I'll put stored.
Thank you.
That's an easy one. Okay.
You said stored on-site for revegetation.
For revegetation. And that is number, there are number four.
Four.
Number four. Any other of these bullet points that we need to address or that anybody has any questions on?
Okay, so what I want to do is just kind of make sure that I've got everything straight, so item number one was okay, conditional use permit approval granted for the five-year period is, is that okay? I can't remember.
If so.
Okay.
Yes, everyone.
And item number two. As worded.
Ten percent variation.
Right?
Okay. And three I know is good.
I just sent you four.
Okay. Four has been noted.
Four.
Five has been noted.
And five's been removed.
Five's removed.
Yes.
And then. The insurance.
Yeah, and that insurance will need to be, the verbiage will need to be placed into there.
Hey, as a side note, guys.
Yes.
I contacted the five. Governmental agencies that were, that had incidents this year. And was talking to our peers. And they were all like, you guys are going through that much effort?
Yes.
So I just want you guys to feel proud of the fact that we've done due diligence here.
Yes.
I think so.
Especially when I talk about moss landing, that one really. God. How the hell that happened in California is beyond me.
Okay, well, I think that we've addressed most of these. We have addressed.
Do we need a motion to remove the? Ten percent out of the staff recommendations?
Where is that at?
Staff recommendations, one, two, three, four, five. It should just be part of the motion that you disregard.
That's what I'm asking.
The motion should just be.
It should be part of the, of the motion.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything, okay.
Yeah, I guess we can just include it in that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CUP twenty-five oh nine. With the exception of the fifth bullet point of the staff recommendations. And the addition of the first four proposed conditions by Mountain Peak Energy.
And.
Chairman, I second.
And the insurance.
Insurance.
Condition, yes.
Yeah, I need to negotiate.
And the seventeen points.
Add the. Negotiate insurance.
Well, we have a motion and a second, then you talk about what other changes and the insurance would be on the other changes.
Yeah, he did second it.
When she said number five on staff bullet point.
Any way you want to do it.
Well, so we have a motion and a second.
Question.
All those in favor briefly?
No.
No question.
No one to discuss that.
You have to ask if there are any additions or corrections.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we need to add that other condition, the insurance condition.
You're correct.
Need to add twelve seventeen oh four conditions required for approval in addition to the insurance.
Okay.
As Paul stated in his email.
As Paul stated in his email. Okay, any other questions then? Okay, so then if we have a motion and a second with those additional comments, can we now bring this to a vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second to include Paul's email. And we'll bring this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
And just a note for the public that a, if you, that there is a, if you want to submit a protest petition. Between now and fourteen days from now is when I would have to receive that. And so it would have to basically be anyone that has received a notice from my office. And I will review it and that will go to, if if I receive that protest petition within fourteen days, then it will go before the, this case will go before the county commissioners for, as an appeal.
That's correct, so if we approve it, the county can file the appeal, if we deny it, the applicant can file the appeal.
That's correct.
Yes, so the public does have fourteen days to file an appeal to you to be brought forth to the county commission.
That's correct, and the way it works, just to kind of review, is twenty percent of the area that was notified, not the property owners, but the area that was notified.
Okay.
Will trigger a a a supermajority vote for the approval of county commissioners.
Okay.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm, I'm making sure to note that down.
Yes.
Is there that document in any place that we can look it up? Or we have to come to your office to do?
Are you, well, I've got the petitions here and and I've got, it actually is in state statute, so.
I'd say the doc, it's in the statute.
And all the required documentation along with it?
Yes, I've, and and like I say, if you come, if you want to come by the office or you have, you can have, Janelle can email it to you or you can come by the office and you can get some, I've got a couple of them here. A note, because this is land that we're talking about, the area that was notified, if you own, if you received a notice and you own multiple parcels within that notification area, then be sure to indicate those parcels as well. All your parcels that you own within that notification area. And if you have any questions, just, you know. Give me a call or, you know, like I say, email me and I'll I'll try to answer your questions.
Okay. So with that being said. I believe we have to move into the item number three, which is the old business, which there's none of. Staff announcements, I don't believe there's any of as well.
Nope.
And beyond that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Been moved and seconded properly, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening.